Commissioner's Court, Brazos County, meeting regular session, July 5th, 2016, 10:00 a.m. Commissioners' courtroom, County Administration Building, 206 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is indication of pleasure allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, Captain J. H. Young, Commissioner Madam Lebo.
I honor God, I want to thank you for all this day. Today you have me, we're going to be rejoicing in this day, regardless what may come, how we pray by county jurors and county commissioners today as we do business for Brazos County, direct them, lead them, guide them in the right direction and in the right path, pray for Brazos County, what else can I say? Pray for the state of Texas, pray for those up in Washington, DC, that they will cross hours and work together for the betterment of this country. Our country is in trouble, the world is in trouble. Dear God, you are only hope for this society and that we are. Pray for all of our law offices who lies in jeopardy each day. Now, God, may we look as throughout the day, everybody says amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, indivisible.
Thank you, Captain Young, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizen input and our concerns. Hearing none, we're going to, we're going to go out of order this morning. Won't be just a minute. We're going to skip number three and consider take action on 4320, but we're only going to go to 14 right now. And then we'll come back up to the presentation. Number 14, recommendation and award of the design contest for Brazos County Health and Wellness Clinic. And I think, do you, I don't think anybody's seen it yet, but the committee has made a recommendation of... Sheriff, you want to come up? Manny? The whole committee.
Yeah. So, there was a contest to choose the, what the look of the well, the clinic, wellness clinic, and it was out to all the employees. The committee looked at everything that was put forward. There was someone chosen. I don't know whether, I mean, I...
You have to?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
We had 13 submissions representing 10 different departments within the county, and the winner is Mandy James with the DA.
Come on up, Manny. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You have anything to say? You want to speak?
Not really. Thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate your effort putting that together. I know it's going to be great looking, you know, moving forward when we get to the clinic, have the logo there, and so...
Good deal. Well, I thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody want to...
We'll, we'll work on the prize.
Okay.
There is a prize, we are working on the details of that. Yes. Yes, there is a prize. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, we'll go back up to number three, presentation and our discussion, presentation of 2015 compliance reports on economic development agreements monitored by the Research Valley Partnership of Brazos County.
Did we need to vote on that? I didn't know if I should have been...
Did we, did we not vote on it?
No, we didn't.
I'll second. Who's got a motion to second?
Aye.
Opposed? None motion here. You got it all?
Yes, I think so, thank you.
Now, we'll go back up to number three. Presentation of 2015 compliance report of economic development agreements monitored by the Research Valley Partnership, Chuck Martinez.
I'll give you this, and you can just flip through it as you want.
Well, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I guess I'm here to give you a different health and wellness report for the economic and economic development incentives for our community, and they're right on pace and very, very healthy. Again, thank you very much for allowing Research Valley Partnership to come this morning and present this report. And for those in the audience that aren't familiar with Research Valley Partnership, partnership promotes and supports the economic diversification of our, of our growing, as our pastor has said, our blessed community. Our remarks this morning are related to our annual compliance communications to our governing body partners with respect to the performance of companies that had received economic development incentives that were in effect during calendar year 2015. So, before I begin, again, let me say we appreciate the court for its support and guidance in our efforts and our role to attract companies and to help existing companies expand in our community. And, I'm sure...
If you just do the right click.
Right click?
I mean, left click.
Left click. So, as an overview of what this presentation's going to be about, it's going to cover nine projects that were being monitored by RVP for, for the county. Two of these nine projects were interlocal agreements that involve the cities of Bryan and College Station, and they don't, they don't cover some of the new agreements that the county's familiar with, Librazol Wayfair project, and the ViaSat project that's been recently announced. In terms of a, of a process, in November and December of 2015, RVP issued letters requesting companies provide us their performance information. And in early this year, we had received that information from, from the companies to capture that full year of 2015 data. So, the first project I'll, I'll cover is in Precinct 4. It's a access pipe and two, there are pipe and two manufacturing company in the Texas Triangle Park. It's in the ETJ of, of the city of Bryan. And this particular project reflects not only the payroll, but the rural and personal property improvements that were, that are out there today. Now, you'll see that really the compliance doesn't really kick in until next year. And so, we really kind of have a year, one more year to kind of get everything under, under rolling. But, the one thing about this particular project is, is a very unique formula that allows the company, in any given year, whether the, the requirements are met on the investment and the payroll, or an employment, maybe one year it might be a little off, but because of the, of the commitment of the community to help see this company move forward, that formula is in place. And so, we don't anticipate that that happening, but it's just one of those fail-safe type of mechanisms, especially for a company like this that's in the energy sector. But, I can say that with the current energy crisis that, that our country's going through, this company's still moving forward. The numbers look really good on pace for payroll. The investment numbers, you can see, is, is well in excess of their investment value, and their employment continues to move forward. The city of Bryan has a non-annexation agreement with this company, and again, that, their, their payment in lieu of taxes contract with the company, that'll kick in next year, and they're anticipating about $378,000 in, in taxes that they would collect. So, I think it's a, a win for, for, for both the county and the, and the city of Bryan. The next project I'll cover is the former ConocoPhillips, now today known as Librazol Specialty Products. This project is now over. They have successfully met their milestones on their payroll, as well as they met their investment numbers really early on into the, to the project. And again, this does not reflect the new agreement that's in effect for the new expansion of their, of their facility, and that project will be captured next year in the, in the next compliance report since it begins in 2016. This first, there are two Fuji Film projects that we'll cover here. This is the first one. This one was originally contracted with Kalon Biotherapeutics, and as our notes say, Fuji Film, they had acquired 49% of the company back in December 2014. This was an agreement between RVP and, and the company only, didn't involve the, the counties or the cities directly. But, one of the things that this College Station facility, it's in, this is the one that's just north of the A&amp;M Research Park. You'll see then, the payroll numbers are really exceptional, and as well as the employment numbers. Now, part of those jobs, or probably a large part of those jobs and the payroll, they will probably carry over to the new Fuji Film facility that's in the bio corridor, but we anticipate that because Fuji Film is still involved with, with the university on the National Center for Therapeutic Manufacturing, that there will still be jobs there at this College Station facility. This second Fuji Film project is the one in the bio corridor. This one, again, it, it looks really good in terms of, of the, of the, of the payroll is anticipated. We saw on the other slide that that numbers will look really good. The employment number is already 117 on the prior slide. It already exceeds this particular employment numbers. And one of the things that, that's to be pointed out here is that these incentive payments, now, they don't begin until October of that particular calendar year that's shown there. The one thing that's to be noted here is that because the, really, the, the compliance doesn't begin until 2018, that's in the contract, it says that it begins two years after the certificate of occupancy has been, has been issued. This project, or this facility currently still is owned by A&amp;M. With, the company anticipates that that transfer of the property will, will occur at the end of this calendar year. So, they'll be on pace with all the expectations that are in this particular facility. But again, this one doesn't start until two years away, but we want to at least give the court a, a view of where they're currently looking at. And I'm sorry, this one is in, in Precinct 4. This next project relates to Kentmore Cabinet, I'm sorry, Kentmore Cabinets. Again, most of the people in our community are well familiar with this really outstanding company, they're cabinet manufacturer. This is also in Precinct 4 in the city of Bryan's District 5. They are one year out from finishing their, their incentives agreement. Again, it'll end next year, and their numbers look really good in terms of their, their investment value. And of course, RVP and the county, well, we'll continue to work with the county and the city of Bryan, as well as the company, on identifying opportunities for the company to continue to expand at their, at their current location. This next facility, or next company project is Nutribolt. This is in Precinct 2. They're a nutraceutical pharm, nutraceutical manufacturer. This particular project, their numbers look really well as well. Their payroll numbers are in excess of what their requirements are for that, that facility. Their investment value, again, is, is in excess of their targets, as well as their employment. We are, would like to arrange a, a tour of this particular facility for the court. It's, it's a very special company, that's one of the first companies in the bio corridor that's really helping to trigger a lot of the, the ancillary growth in that, in that part of our community. This next project, you may have, this may, this project may be in your distant memory, primarily because the incentives actually stopped in 2014. But one of the other reasons why it's here is because in the contract with the company, while the, the abatements had, had stopped, the company was required to maintain a certain payroll level, and that payroll level was not met. We have prepared a draft letter of, for recapture of, of the, of the incentives that were not collected. Again, this was only on personal property that was, was abated. We, we estimate that the lost taxes for Brazos County was about $1,900. The city of Bryan did not capture about $2,500, so roughly about $4,400 total over the life of the, of the contract. About half of the taxes that were collected, which was about $335,000, that benefited Bryan ISD. And, but we think that this project truly set the stage for the, the current occupant of this building, which is the Wayfair facility off of University Drive. Again, this project is in Precinct 2, and we're happy to work with the county attorney's office on, on making this particular contract right. The next project we'll cover is Reynolds and Reynolds Project. They're a software developer in, in South College Station for the auto industry and the dealerships. This is in Precinct 3. And as you can see, on the, the payroll numbers, they're well in excess of the, the target of 18 million, they're at 22.7 million. Their investment value, again, is well in excess of that target requirement. We will anticipate coming back, or working with the county to issue their two grants from the county. One would be in this retention and expansion grant, and the annual payroll grant. It would be identical to the sum that was paid last year, which would be in total $45,000. And the last project we'll cover is Toyo Inc. They're in Precinct 4, they're in the city of Bryan's District 2, and this is a specialty chemical manufacturer. And this project is over. They successfully met their payroll requirements, as well as their investment targets. The next step for this particular project is when the original agreement was, was struck with the company, the Bryan Business Council had, had a first lien on the property. And now that the, the project has been successfully completed, the city of Bryan and Bryan Business Council are securing outside counsel to go through the process of releasing those liens on the county records. And, but it's always been on, in ownership of the, of the company, but it just had that one, that one attachment to it. We're going to continue to work with this company on their interest to continue to grow in our community. We're, look forward to working with the county on those opportunities. And as I conclude my remarks, again, we just, we wanted to say thank you to Brazos County and to the citizens of our community for supporting Research Valley Partnership. We appreciate your input, your guidance, and your leadership on all the initiatives that we work to grow our community. And last thing I'll mention is that we, we truly appreciate the help of the county attorney's office in structuring a lot of these projects. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
We will now consider take action on agenda items 4320, and on course reappointment of following local workforce development board terms of appointment, 0701, 2016 through 0630, 2019, A, Angie and Anne's Education, B, Robert Ogerball, Private Sector, and C, Doug Wheaton, vocational rehab.
I'm motion for approval, A, B, and C.
Motion, most make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number five, consider take action on an order authorizing the county attorney to initiate a lawsuit against Volkswagen and Audi for violations of Clean Air Act and authorizing the employment of outside counsel. Move, approve.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number six is consider and possible action sending the board, setting the bond amount for the election administrator for $20,000 and approval of such official bond and oath for Trudy Hancock pursuant to section 31.040a of the Texas Election Code. Move, approve.
Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number seven is consider and possible action on requiring a bond for all election administrator deputies in the amount of $20,000 and approval of such bonds in accordance with section 31.040b of the election code.
Motion, approve.
Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number eight is memorandum of understanding between Brazos County and Community Supervision and Corrections Department regards to pretrial bond supervision program.
Motion, approve.
Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number nine is memorandum of understanding between Brazos County and Community Supervision and Corrections Department in regards to the drug code program.
Move, approve. Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 10 is memorandum of understanding with the Texas Juvenile Justice Department for Housing of Debra Harris, Regional Director.
Motion, approve.
Second. Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 13, contractor Stuart Urban of Central Texas Polygraph Associates for Juvenile Sex Fender Polygraphs.
Move, approve. Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 12 is contract with Madison County Juvenile Probation Department for the contracting of pre-adjudication detention bids.
Motion, approve.
Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 13, replata Block 14, Cedar Oaks Estates, Volume 1239, Page 739, and the adjoining quick claim roadside area, 5.832 acres, HR Cart Mel Survey, A88, Brazos County, Texas, Precinct 2. Move, approve.
Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 15 is tax refund application for the following, A, Guadalupe Zarate, overpayment of $840.99, B, Isdard Garcia, payment of $17.05, C, Gloria Carey, overpayment of $15.29, and D, Rebecca Brown, overpayment of $7.15.
I'm motion for approval, A through D.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 16 is budget amendments, budget amendments, 15/16, 40.1 through 40.4.
Move, approve.
Second. Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 17 is personnel change of status.
Motion, approve.
Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 18 is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 7145942 through claim number 7146127. Move, approve.
Second.
Motion, make second discussion. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Number 21, sheriff's report on inmate population, sheriff.
Judge, Commissioners, our peak in the last 24 hours is 680.
Wow.
Yeah.
What do you say?
We have laid in the notes our EM numbers, we're on vacation this week. I can give you last week's numbers, 54 and 20 or 25.
Okay. Thank you, sheriff. Number 22 is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none, number 23 is call for citizens input and our concerns.
Oh, you might just remind, we have a workshop.
That's right, we do 1:30 today. Hearing others, we'll go to number 19, convening executive session for the following, and I think we will, I think we'll take C first, go in on that one first, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss personnel matters. Of course, the court Jennifer attorneys, let's think all, these DM, time is...
Would you want me to enter?
Yes. 10.27. We're coming out of executive session, it's 11:08, on agenda item 19C, and I don't think there'll be any action taken on that. And we will go back into executive session, 11:08, to, for number B, executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the position of Chief Information Officer. reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the position of chief information officer. Same group that was in there while ago in area.
I don't think we discussed the legal one or did we?
Yes, I've heard.
We don't think on the statement, the Clean Air Act, you know, the statements, the statement on the agenda item that you had to put in there. Just walk through the different reports. Do you want to give them a quick statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think it helps. Okay. Yeah. 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 I know it's not good. It hurts.
Coming out of executive session is 12:59. We have action to be taken.
Yes, sir. I would ask that we revisit personnel change, as I was 17. The personnel action form with regards to Helen Cook. I offered that we deny separation.
Can we get a motion?
That is a motion. So just to clarify, we are not approving that action.
We are not approving the request for separation by the department here. We are denying that.
Okay. We got a motion. Go here, second.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to deny personnel action that was put on the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, that also includes agenda item 19C, personnel matters. Originally, the commissioner's court had come out and, and taken no action, but this is that action.
Yeah. With regards to C, this is the action.
And now we have moved to agenda item executive session 19B for the executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of the position of chief information officer.
With regards to our chief information officer, we will take disciplinary actions. Do you want me to state what we're gonna?
Yes, ma'am, because I, I don't know.
Which will include two weeks of unpaid leave suspension. Two weeks, no pay.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Discussion. All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
We have any, that's all we had. Do we need to take action?
And just for the record, we did not meet under executive session A today.
That's great.
That's right.
That was resolved in open session.
Okay.
1:30. 1:30, yeah. Okay. Next item will be addressed to adjourn.
Thank you.